Good evening, thank you and welcome to the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for May 18th, 2020. Roll call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Present.
Ms. Mansfield?
Here.
Ms. Satri?
Present.
Dr. Akbar? Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. McKendrick? Valerie, you're still on mute. Mrs. McKendrick?
Here, sorry.
Very good, thank you.
Great, if everyone could mute their microphones, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Thank you very much for that. And our next order of business, our community and is Community and School Reflections. Would anyone like to speak? And I'll be keeping an eye on the chat as well as your hands if you have, if you show them. And I believe Valerie already chimed in to start, so Valerie?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by sending kudos to the district for serving almost 400,000 meals since March 16th. Second, I have some shout outs for the Bookto Cluster and their faculty and staff. First of all, to Kraus for a parade for their students on May 7th, and to all the faculty and staff in the Bookto Cluster for continually reaching out to their families to maintain connectivity so that the learning can continue. And finally, as teachers clean out their classrooms, many are hand delivering student belongings to their, to their kiddos home. So congratulations on a job well done to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I know we keep saying this here too, but I have to say it again. I want to thank the teachers. This week I had a couple of conversations with people in the public and during those conversations, people are really starting to realize how valuable our teachers are. And I told people, thank you. I told them to tell everyone that because if it wasn't for teachers, where would we be? And so they, they're starting to really get it, how valuable that, I think some of our parents who may have not believed in how well and how hard it is for our teachers that they did. They're starting to believe that our students, our, I'm sorry, our teachers are doing a very, very good job. So I wanted to thank the teachers again. And again, we, I hope that maybe we'll have something virtually with the, the Teacher of the Year banquet. But I, it's something I really, really like and it's dear to my heart. So I hope that we have something like that. And the other thing was, last week I was, uh, we got a little text that one of our, our representative, our student representative Nathaniel Smith was on Channel 3 last week. And Nathaniel, he represented himself, his family and APS in an esteemed manner as always. And I wanted to make sure I give him a shout out because he is, he always does a very good job for himself, his students, his family, our district. And I wanted to thank, thank him for, for that and tell him to continue to do the work that he's doing as he gets ready for, to move on in, in the subsequent life. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Ms. Satri. Ms. Satri? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. So I just kind of piggyback and I wanted to again thank the teachers. I saw lots of videos going out from various schools, from staff who are dismissing their students that have been shared on social media. And I think it just goes to show their hearts. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, think that's very important. Also a shout out to the Akron Council of PTA. I was able to attend their last meeting. And just wanted to acknowledge them for their continued work despite everything. They're still working quietly behind the scenes, ensuring that scholarships, we get paid out to our students as they embark on advanced learning after this 2020 school year. And then lastly, just a special shout out as a new board member, as I continue to learn more about the district, was able to meet with Dan Rambler, Deb Fult, Carla Chapman, and again Kathy McVay. I think it's just really important touching base with those departments, just showing them appreciation and thanks for all that they do. A lot of folks just don't really understand all the inner workings of the district. And it just again goes a long way with contributing to an informed board. So I just wanted to thank them for the opportunity to learn more about their departments and the team that works alongside them.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that too. Ms. Mansfield?
Hi, everybody. It's good to see your faces. Just wanted to talk about two things briefly. Love everything everyone's talked about so far. Wanted to give a shout out to the Women's Endowment Fund, I believe, Mrs. McKendrick and I. And Patrick, I know you also got to have a virtual, virtual dinner. It was wonderful to see our friend Sylvia Trundle honored. She's a fantastic representative of what it means to give back to your community. And big thanks to all of the people who continue to contribute to women and successes in Summit County. We really are very blessed. Also, a big thanks to Kemp Boyd and Love Akron for having Carla Chapman and I on live last week. It was way, way more than I thought it was gonna be. I thought it was just gonna be a chat with, with Kemp and, and Ben and Carla and I. And it was a, it was a live Facebook, lots of Q and A. Just want to stress again, some of the things that we talked about. With everything that we're doing and all the great shout outs you hear us giving, we're in no way have we ever said that we're done trying or that we've reached accomplishment or that somehow we're, we're finished. And isn't this great what we've done and patting ourselves on the back? We're just saying, what a great and incredible job it's been to flip an entire brick and mortar district in, in less than three weeks' time and finishing off the school year so strong. And I think that we're gonna come back even stronger in the fall. So just, just great work everyone's doing. And I, I just can't say enough about how this board has worked hard to learn and come together under these circumstances.
Alright, we're gonna pause for just a second and wait for Mr. Alexander to rejoin the meeting. Bruce, you, you with us there?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, perfect. And Ms. Mansfield, I'm sorry, I may have cut you off. Was, was that all you had there?
That's it. Sorry, it kicked me off there for a second. I don't know what happened.
Well, good, because I didn't see you get kicked off there, but I did see Bruce get kicked off. So just remember, if anyone gets kicked off, we're gonna pause for just a minute until they have a chance to rejoin. So thank you. Ms. Mansfield, did you have anything else or was that?
That's it, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Dr. Akbar?
Yes, um, just really briefly, I think that I echo everything that everyone else said. One of the things that also happened this weekend was LeBron James hosted the virtual graduation, which was amazing. He mentioned Akron Public Schools a few times, but specifically talked about the importance of teachers and how our schools are the foundation of, of our community. And he called it essential service. So when you think about the hundreds of thousands of meals that we provided to families and students across this district since we've been in this remote learning environment is really impressive. Another thing is, I think that there are some, I've also talked to some parents and some concerned community members about children in special ed. And ironically, there's also been some talk in the community around some support that can happen with special ed. So I know I talked to Dr. James about that. And I think that there are some things that, that we can do to support those parents and make them feel a little bit better about what we're doing and shoring up some of the things that we do. So I think that this week has been really good with some good news. And then also, we also want to let people know we do hear their concerns and we are listening.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. President, this is Dr. Hall. I'd like to weigh in if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Sure.
You hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can hear anybody at this point.
Dr. Hall, maybe, yeah. And so hold on to yours. Let's make sure we get a chance to connect.
Sure.
Dr. Akbar, can you hear me? Okay, he's left the meeting. We'll wait for him to come back.
In the meantime, Mr. President, I'll send him the call in information.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for your patience. New territory still. We should be thanking the public who may be watching the live feed, so thank you for your patience.
Well, and I will also, I will apologize to the public for my unsteamly haircut or the lack thereof. I promise those of you who are watching that I will get that and get this mop in, in together in short order. So.
Dr. Akbar, it looks like you're back with us. Can you hear?
I can. I don't know what you heard last, but.
Just you asking if we could hear you. We could hear you. So.
Oh, you heard everything I said?
Yep, we, we heard you. We just couldn't hear, you couldn't hear us, it sounded like.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I had.
Alright, good. Thank you so much. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, thank you. So, so I'm not gonna recount all, all the folks that have already been thanked. So again, because I, I would take 10 more minutes, but, but instead what I want to do is you as well. Because you know, these, you know, these last several months have, have meant, have meant a lot of extra meetings, a lot of extra work. And though, and though this is why we're elected and, and while it's a pleasure to serve, it still doesn't mean, you know, that, that, that they're, that we haven't spent a lot of our time, you know, extra time, if you will, like really trying to make sure that, that folks are taken care of appropriately and that we're partnering with our, with our senior leadership, Dr. James and Dr. McWilliams Woods and Ryan Pendleton, et cetera. You know, speaking of which, you know, I wanna, you know, thank Ryan especially because, you know, he's gonna walk through a fairly lengthy talk around finance today, which will also serve as our, our finance update. And let me just tell you that a lot of, a lot of time and preparation has gone into this. And most of it being done by, by Mr. Pendleton. And so I just, I, so I, again, so I want to thank him especially for all the hard work that, that he's doing and helping to sort of help us understand, you know, the financial implications of this COVID crisis. So, so Mr. Pendleton, thank you very much for your time and I'm looking forward to your, your presentation later on in, in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Appreciate all the comments. We have no request to address the board tonight. But for communications, as Dr. Hall just alluded to, we do have a presentation tonight on the five-year forecast. So, Mr. Pendleton, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you so much. Let me present my screen. And I want to make sure that everybody is seeing this. Is the PowerPoint up on the screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Very good. We did a dry run earlier today, so hopefully this goes smooth. Well, welcome to the May five-year forecast. Welcome to the board administration and the community tuning in. This is one of the more important and challenging forecasts that I've ever put together in my career, both as a school and private industry professional. And it certainly could not be put together without the support of the staff internally, of which we'll talk about, the board, the finance committee, and discussions up to this point. But as you'll hear throughout tonight's theme in the presentation, I'm setting the stage for future five-year forecast updates. I can almost certainly guarantee that we would be, we will be back in front of the board within a matter of weeks, if not months, updating based on COVID-19 crisis that's upon us in terms of revenue, state budget cuts, potential for levy. So throughout tonight's theme presentation, we're gonna have a few themes. Before we get to those themes, obviously our strategic plan to be the number one urban in the United States has a foundational component down at the bottom in red. You see skilled employees, financial stability, and advanced technology. And that's brought to you from the operations team. We're here to support learning, to strengthen those resources that we're sending out to our teachers on the frontline, our food service on the frontline, our custodians, and making sure that each and every one of them have the resources they need in this time. And it is truly a challenge. In today's presentation, we're gonna cover the purpose of the five-year forecast. We have four new board members who are intensely taking a crash course on forecasting. And we'll talk a little bit about that. We're gonna review expenditure and revenue as a response to COVID-19, the state budget reduction for the current school year, what to expect in future years, with a general theme both on the revenue, expenses, and how we're going to plan for the fall. What are the practical implications? We will finish the presentation talking about our deficit spending trends and future revenue needs. And I couldn't underscore enough how important it is to engage in the conversation and to begin that planning now. Really, this presentation is just a snapshot, but the conversations leading up to today and taking place for the 150-plus staff members that we convened last week and will meet every week, and the multiple community members and board members and, and committee meetings that will be on hand to support the fall. We're gonna spend a little bit of time going over the importance of the forecast. This is, if everybody can see how to read a five-year forecast, is that up on the screen?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. I've highlighted a few of the sections. This is from the Ohio Department of Education. And you see there, I won't read the entire portion of it, but it outlines when you need to update a forecast. It says, "A variety of events will ultimately impact the latter years." And frankly, it's all of the events. It is a global pandemic in crisis. It is a state budget in crisis. It is Akron Public Schools nearing the end of its levy cycle. So looking at, at the end of the school year 2021, it's gonna be looking at a new biennium budget. And it's a reappraisal year for local property tax. There's not, really isn't anything you can do but say that everything in the kitchen sink is thrown at this forecast in terms of when and how you update it. It says, "For the financial forecast to be meaningful, the numbers only tell us more part of the story." Those assumptions of what we've talked about, now finance committing twice a month, and for the community tuning in on this so important discussion, the assumptions are extremely important. But it's also important for us to stress test those assumptions almost monthly at this point so that we don't overreact. We don't make budget reductions prematurely until we have a knowledge of what's coming. The purpose and objectives of the five-year forecast is to engage you, engage the community in this long-range planning. Unfortunately, right now, our, our sights are set a little shorter. So we're gonna keep it to maybe a couple of years for planning. Just as important as engaging the community and stakeholders is for this forecast to be the basics in determining our ability to sign contracts. And again, as you know, we're in the midst of negotiations with some of our bargaining groups. Our ability to sign contracts and the largest being our negotiated agreements are, this timeline will also be shortened for them. And then, as we've talked in finance committee, I know for other board members, what funds? So general fund and emergency levy funds and any debt service. All other state and federal grants are not included in the forecast.
Ryan, are you still with us? Can someone let me know if I'm still with you?
No, no, I, I see, I see you, Mr. President. Ryan is frozen.
Ryan, yeah, Ryan is.
Yeah, Ryan is.
It's hard to tell because he's so stoic, but we will give him a minute just to rejoin us here.
I just told him.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar.
Yeah, I wondered how, how long he might talk, because he might go to the next slide. He doesn't realize that he's frozen. So that, 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 that happened to me on, on a meeting this morning.
Yeah, he knows. He's coming back in. He said.
Alright.
The joys of technology.
Great when it works, right?
Yeah, we gotta get used to it though.
I need some of that Bruce Alexander Wi-Fi. He never gets kicked out.
I don't think you want my Wi-Fi. I borrowed just for these meetings.
He said he's having difficulty.
Alright.
I'm assuming it's not letting him back in.
Okay, we can be patient a moment. He's also got the call in number, so he can call in via phone if he needs to. It'll be a little hard for the presentation, but if one of us needs to, I can probably show that too.
Alright, alright.
Alright, give, give me one, give me one second. Alright, thank you. Ryan is going to call in. He's going to share his presentation and I am going to share my screen and be his slide conductor. So if everyone could bear with us for one second.
Teamwork makes the dream work, Patrick Bravo.
Alright, I have a presentation, so give me two seconds.
Okay, can you?
There we go, okay.
I'm back. That's, I came into work so that we could be really solid with technology and I could have multiple screens on. So let's, let's try this again. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I got you.
Your presentation is opening, so give me just one second.
I, does everybody have it up on their screen?
Nope, it's, it's opening now, so give me just, oh.
Yeah, so I have mine open.
Okay, and I'll have it ready just in case.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, the system wasn't tired of me presenting my forecast yet. I wasn't, I wasn't done. Okay, this is where we left off, I'm assuming, with the revenue sources. And as you see, the large portion in the tan section is our state funding, closely followed by real estate. Our local real estate makes up about 30% of our revenue. And our state aid makes up about 60% of our revenue. And so to the right of this chart, you see a five-year average actual annual dollar change. So leading up to today, we've had a five-year growth rate, if everybody can see my cursor, of about 2.6% in average annual growth of revenue. The majority of our revenues come from, the majority of our revenue increases come from state aid. As the board knows and finance committee knows, that since 2008, that 30% portion of general property tax or real estate taxes locally hasn't grown. In fact, for this current fiscal year would be the first time that we've predicted any local real estate growth since 2008. Included in the five-year projected average annual is the state budget reduction and some future deflation on property values. And we're predicting the next five years to grow at just under 1%. Just to check in back with the board, can everybody see the enrollment chart?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. This gives some perspective on the, right following the revenue sources, about the state foundation formula or what people commonly refer to, how we fund schools and the unconstitutionality. Up until last year, schools were funded on average daily membership. So the number of resident students in a particular school district would be counted and funded based on a sliding scale from wealthiest to poorest. So we see back in 2007, we were funded on 26,000 students. And today, we're just under 21,000. So why is this chart important now? As we entered last school year, we had a new governor, new leadership in Columbus. And there was a lot of debate, as you know, around school funding formulas. The school funding formula at that point in time was frozen. And the wellness and success dollars were put in, in its place. In a sense, every school district in Ohio was placed on a guarantee. Therefore, and the reason that we see a little bit of increase in students from 2016 was when increased accountability happened for community and charter schools. So we saw students returning to Akron Public Schools. There's a healthy debate amongst our colleagues going on right now about this week, we should know whether that community and charter schools will receive a budget cut. In all likelihood, they will. There's also a debate amongst our colleagues, some of which believe we will receive students coming back after the closure of some of the community and charter schools who are not able to financially weather the storm. of some of the community and charter schools who are not able to financially weather the storm. And again, to follow up on the new governor's budget wellness and every district being guaranteed, we will not get additional revenue for any student in this current biennial budget. Let me say that again, if we were to get one, 10, or 200 students from a closure from a community or charter school, we would not see additional revenue as a result of that formula being frozen.
Hey, Ryan, this is Derek, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
To that. When, so, you know, pre-COVID, when would the state have revisited the number of students that were included in our guarantee? Was that something that happens on the biennium or every four years? And then, and then kind of part two to that is, you know, now that we're sort of engaged in COVID, has there been any more recent guidance about when they may revisit that again?
Good question, so prior to this governor taking office and the new formula that we were in, we were counting students monthly. And maybe five plus years ago, we were counting students every October and February. And that's how our funding would be adjusted. We were counting students, every district was counting students monthly. And your state foundation or your state payments would be adjusted and reconciled through GIM. And it was a bit of a shock to see that the formula would be frozen to start the 1920 school year. And so districts with increasing enrollment are at a disadvantage. Whereas districts with decreasing enrollment were at advantage because they were held harmless at a higher rate. And speaking of that held harmless, our payments are based on last fiscal year. So no district will receive less than what it did last year. As far as the future conversations, I do know that there are legislators picking back up the conversation of House Bill 305. And even though there's not revenue available, for some argument that now is the best time to be advocating for a new formula that makes sense. And I know that they have begun those discussions and asked for participation from our superintendent, myself, within the next few weeks. I anticipate those conversations starting up again.
Well, and Ryan, the fact that essentially nobody's on that formula, doesn't that sort of argue for, make the case for developing a new formula now, since nobody's really on the other one anyway?
It does, ironically. All of the headwinds that we saw in House Bill 305 were as a result of future recession. And future recession in 2008 took our previous funding. And they're saying, well, there's no revenue to support anything in the immediate future. So ironically, now's the perfect time. Right, so if we can start with a formula that focuses on the classroom and directing resources to the classroom like what was projected in 305, I think maybe we'll see some traction. Let's shift to expenditures before we talk to, talk through the response of COVID-19. Much like we see on the left side of this is chart, we see salaries, benefits, and purchase services are the majority of our expenses. Just to put into perspective, salaries represent about 50% of our expenditures, benefits are about 20% and purchase services are 22%. Purchase services, as a reminder, largely reflect the choice options that some of our students have made. So open enrollment out, charter and community school, and electronic schools. In a sense, students leave, they're being educated by different institutions, and they're billing us for those services. And as you know, one of the frustrations that we have in public K-12 is that we are the fiscal agent for that. So we are transferring a large sum of money every year to those choice options. To the chart to the right, you see the historical average annual change leading up to today. So looking back at the last five years, our expenses have trended just under 3%. Looking forward, using the assumptions of what we have today, we're trending at 3.5%. Again, if we compare and contrast our revenue currently projected at, our expenditures currently projected at 3.5 to our revenue of just under 1%, we know that's an unsustainable business model. Want to pause there, though, and make sure that those who are listening, the board and our stakeholders know, this is how every school district is funded in Ohio. Every school district will be back for their voting public for additional revenue. And you know from studies that we've produced that on average, every six years, we're back in front of the public for new revenue. And we, we talk and laugh about the alligator chart of revenue and expenses. And I know one of our board members had a, has a better description of it than that. But as those expenses widen and we begin to deficit spend, dipping deeper into our reserves, the closure and how we address that can sometimes be harmful, painful, and hit programs that affect our students the most. Are there any questions leading up to that part before we start getting into the response to COVID and planning moving forward?
Any questions for Mr. Pendleton so far?
Okay. Hearing none. So up on your screen is a response to COVID-19. Here's what we know. The CARES Act provided Akron Public Schools with about 10.7 million, of which 1.2 million needs to be transferred to our non-publics. Again, this is like that purchase service that we talked about. We're required to provide services to those students in need. And a lot of that $1.2 million are tutor services offered to those students. We also know on the expense side that the Ohio Department of Education passed through from the governor, announced $300 million of reductions to K-12 education. Akron Public Schools will see a reduction of about $3.5 million. Our original estimate was 7 million. I'm gonna stop and thank the Department of Education and their conversations with the governor's office in applying a wealth component to those reductions. If that conversation hadn't taken place, we would have seen a reduction of about $7 million, which we were originally estimating. So we appreciate the advocacy for that conversation. Just to put in perspective, that $3.5 million is 1% of our overall general fund budget. And why we're on the 1%, we talked a little bit in finance committee anecdotally about this. And so the rhetorical question is, if I was 99% accurate on revenues, would you be okay with that? If I was 99% accurate on expenditures, would you be okay with that? I think that's a pretty reasonable perspective. So 1% of our budget, as we know, is $3.5 million. But if we're wrong, 1% in opposite directions on both the revenue and expenses, we're now looking at $7 million delta or difference on one year of our forecast. So think of how that compounds through. And the reason I bring that up is because we're going to be talking about the second part here, the final part of the presentation is talking about the uncertainty of the forecast, the uncertainty of future budget reductions, and the uncertainty of how we respond to almost the daily barrage of information of planning and masks and return to school and transportation, the barrage of uncertainty around our budget. This is taken directly from your detailed finance report. And it puts into perspective down at the bottom that one month's payroll and how important our cash flow management is, is about $15 million. And the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum cash balance of no less than two months or 60 days operating expenses. And so to carry that forward to cash balance and benchmark comparison, just so you get a really deep understanding of how important our cash flow management is going to be. So you see our annual budget on the left. You see today's cash on hand. You see some metrics of comparison throughout. And so as we look to the next few slides and how we're going to respond to this, I want to stop and bring up another couple of slides from Forecast Five and some of the presentations that they've done. This should set our priority on the years of the focus forecast, keeping it tight, keeping it till one and two years and not getting buried in those details out three, four, and five. Looking and responding to data, but not being speculative about long-term implications until we know. Cash position, as you know, we approve a five-year forecast twice a year. Again, as I talked to you in the beginning of the presentation, I can guarantee that we're going to do this more than twice a year and maybe monthly. We are going to be stress testing cash reserves monthly with the finance committee. As we enter into next year, next school year, budget year, starting July 1st, what is that sense of urgency? How will we respond to the likely budget reduction from the state? Is it going to be 5%, 10%, could it be 20%? So that we don't overreact to that, the bottom bullets really put into perspective how we should respond. Right-size, right-size, downsize. And on the next slide, I want to highlight the actual budget response to this. So that the public and the board know how to operate in this time of urgency. Right-sizing meaning we will do whatever we can possibly do through attrition to address the budget. A good example of this is how the board has reacted to right sizing their footprint over the past 10 to 15 years and slowly reducing the footprint, not overreacting, but that lessened the budget and operational expense into a capacity utilization for the district that's very reasonable. Right-sizing B. Repurposing our budgets, redirecting funds to the classroom, being responsive. And we've been monitoring week to week now with finance committee. And we just ran some numbers today about how we are running slightly under budget from previous years and previous months and to budget versus actual this year. And then finally, is downsizing, cuts to survive. And you're going to see one of the last charts that we have is modeling a 10% budget reduction. And we'll talk through that a little bit.
Hey, Ryan.
Yes.
This is Derek, I just, so, so if folks in the public are following along, you know, you know, I know one of the questions, you know, that, that I, that, you know, I asked earlier on was around, okay, so I see that, you know, the state reduced our, our allocation by, by what amounts to being, you know, 1%, 3.5 million dollars. However, you know, you know, in the CARES Act, we got $10 million. And even though, you know, 1.2 million goes to, you know, is really a pass-through, you know, we're still to the good $5, $6 million, right? You know, so, so, so if someone's following along, you know, they may have that question. And I, I just wanted to ask you to, you know, to really opine on, on that, as you did for me sort of offline.
Great, thanks for that question. So you're right, we did receive just under $10 million in CARES Act money. The CARES Act money is good back to March 13th through all of next school year. As we begin to talk about future budget reductions in the multiples of 5 or 10%, that just under $10 million could evaporate very, very quickly. And so I did receive a question this afternoon about why isn't that CARES Act money reflected in the current forecast? You received the money. We actually haven't received the money. We've received the allocation of funds. We know that we can go back and code some expenditures from March 13th on, giving some relief to the general fund. We don't actually know what those expenditures are, and we haven't been able to draw the money yet. So I think those are important notes. Thank you, Dr. Hall, for the public to know that while it could erase our deficit for this fiscal year, it's not likely, but it could. It is certainly not going to address the deficits that we receive following any additional budget reductions.
And Ryan, if I, if I can add to that, so I know that, you know, we, we've talked offline about sort of a back of, back of the envelope sort of calculation around something as simplistic as mask, you know, for the next school year, right? And I think we had talked about, you know, you looked at some of the, the bulk buying that was available. We still were looking at, you know, up, up to, you know, it could be as much as a couple hundred thousand dollars a week, a couple hundred thousand dollars a week to provide masks for our, our students. And so to your point, you know, that, you know, whatever surplus there is from that, from that CARES Act, it will be gone very, 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 very quickly.
Yeah, thanks for those added comments, for sure. Just to verify, everybody's looking at forecast summary, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And so I just want to leave that up. This is the forecast that we will be submitting to the Department of Education following tonight's adoption. But let's go to the next slide so we can compare and contrast the two from October to May. You'll see in October, we had a $1.8 million budget deficit. And to this year, we're looking at about a $3.6 million deficit. That in, the 3.6 million includes two components. It includes the state budget reduction and it includes some additional unemployment expense of which we're starting to see. And I wanted you to see the compounded process, just looking and keeping it a little tighter, the three years from 2020 to 2022, we have from the October forecast, $22 million in the books in cash to fiscal '22 at $17 million. Just a reminder that our cash reserve policy says that we should have about $38 million in the bank at a minimum. I did want to model. And again, I don't want this model to be what the board and or public views is what we are submitting or assuming will happen. We believe we will get somewhere in the neighborhoods of a 5 to 10. It could be as high as 20% reduction. I wanted to model what a one-time 10% reduction in state aid looks like. Again, this is not being submitted to the Department of Ed. In a sense, we receive about $200 million in restricted and unrestricted state aid. So that's our state, back to those original charts, that's our state formula. That's about $20 million in one-time monies. And you can see what a catastrophic impact that has on our budget. So how do we respond? How do we plan? What does that look like? Here's what one of the board members asked in finance committee of what I believe may happen and should happen as it relates to future budget. as it relates to future budget reductions. By July 1st, we will know that there will be three to four months of sales, income, and auto revenue data to the state of Ohio. We also know that our local government counterparts have already been receiving their budget reductions in upwards of 20%. Again, schools have a little bit of insulation because, as you know, 30% of our revenue comes from property taxes. And that range is anywhere from 5% to almost 100% of districts that rely on local property taxes. So we're insulated a little bit from that. So what I think will happen is that the state over the next few weeks and leading up to the next school year, will announce a budget reduction so that school districts can plan. That budget reduction will be applied to the entire fiscal year. And then sometime in the mid-part of the year, when they've got seven, eight, nine months' worth of data, they can make mid-year course corrections. I think if the state of Ohio waited to give those budget reductions until October or January, that would eliminate a district's ability to plan. That could cause mid-year programmatic cuts, which are the worst that you could imagine, because those almost definitely impact the classroom. But again, I just want to underscore that this one-time 10% reduction is a model. It is not what we are submitting to Ohio. The forecast now on your screen is what will be officially submitted with our current cuts of 3.5 million. How do we go forward from here? That we engage each other, the community in this planning? And what other scenarios do we need to consider? These are all things that the board wants the public to know that we're going to be looking at daily at this point. And with that, I will pause and turn it back over to the board for questions or follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pendleton. If anyone has questions, feel free to raise your hand or give me a shout on our chat. Questions or comments?
Yeah, hi, this is Derek, if I could weigh in.
Yeah, Dr.
You know, so Ryan, the point, that last slide, you're going there. It's from a planning standpoint, when we think about a levy, what are your thoughts around sort of what process we would follow or what steps we could take to try to come up with what would be a reasonable levy request of the public? And what sort of considerations? And again, several which you've touched on already as far as the uncertainty certainly impacts that. But in addition to that, are there other items that you think could potentially create or make it difficult, if you will, to ascertain what would be an appropriate sort of levy amount?
Yeah, thanks for the question. For some historical perspective, we, as we know, in our early board orientations, and as we've been discussing in finance really for the past year, we know that we're coming to the end of our cycle when we need to ask for additional revenue. On average, the past, what, 30-plus years, we come back to the voting public about every six years. We're at eight years now. And so I want to, I think Dr. Hall's question is also a good point of clarity for those tuning in is regardless of COVID-19, we would still be planning for additional revenue. The unprecedented event and global pandemic will have ripples, if not pretty significant waves, on all local governments in K-12 education, emphasizing our need for operating revenue. We have a very serious need for operating revenue in terms of millage. That's going to be part of our discussions moving forward. And I know the board's looking for some time to publicly discuss that. The last two operating levies in 2006 and in 2012, we passed 7.9 mills. And to put into perspective, we will need every penny of an equivalent millage, something like that.
So this is NJ.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Ryan, we were already in need of reviewing the potential for additional operating expenses. COVID not only sped that up, but what I'm also gathering from all of the presentations is that it increased the sense of urgency. Is that, would that be an accurate assessment?
Very, very well said. Yes.
And Ryan, this is Derek, if I could sort of piggyback off that. So, you know, so how possible, how likely or how it's possible that, you know, to your point, you said every six years we've asked, you know, with the last two for 7.9 mills. It sounds like, again, to Dr. Akbar's point, it sounds like that if we see a significant state budget cut, that we could pass a levy hypothetically at 7.9 mills, and it would not last us six years. And so we could potentially be back again asking, you know, two to four. So again, am I interpreting sort of what you're saying correctly? That that would be a possibility as well?
Yes, well said. And I would also add that the further delay of asking for revenue, there's a greater need for additional millage. So a passage of an operating levy in calendar year 2020 allows us to start collecting January 1st of '21. And then it bridges two fiscal years, and you've seen how this compounds through the forecast. If we don't pass new money until next year, the soonest we would see additional revenue would be January 1st of 2021. And so that has very significant impacts to our budget and how we respond.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Pendleton?
I just have one. I want to get clarity on what Mr. Pendleton just said. I believe you meant 2022, January 1st, 2022, in that last statement?
You're correct. Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. There's people out there. And there's a year lag, and so I just wanted to make sure that was noted.
That's correct. Thank you.
Good point, Dr. Akbar. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Feedback? All right, hearing none, then we would like to and do have a need to approve the five-year forecast as presented by Mr. Pendleton, so I would entertain a motion. Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick and a second by Ms. Autry for approval of the May 2025 forecast. Any final comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please. I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to thank Ryan for the robust presentation. Again, we covered a lot there. You know, and so I know that if folks need to sort of re-watch part of this, or review it, I would highly recommend that. And then again, if they've got questions, they should feel free to reach out to, you know, you know, members of the board as well. Because again, we're interested in your feedback as well. If there were points that maybe you didn't follow or would like some clarification on or more in-depth, you know, slides on it, if you will. So again, Ryan, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll look for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from May 4th, 2020.
Some of.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Mansfield and a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's recommendations, personnel?
Yes, Mr. President. I wish to recommend approval of personnel recommendations presented in categories 5 through 16. And at this time, I'd like Kathy McVay to read some bios on individuals who are covered under my recommendation 5.11, 5.12, and 5.13.
Thank you. And I believe these are also, you have these board members if you want to read along.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Tonight I have 10 different bios to go through for you this evening. I do want to point out, though, of these 10, four are Akron Public Schools graduates, two from Bookdol, one from Ellett, and one from North. I will start with 5.11, which is the recommendation for Don Harper. Ms. Harper is a graduate of Bookdol High School. She attended the University of Akron where she obtained a Bachelor's of Arts degree in education and later a Master's of Arts degree in education. And in 2010, she obtained her principal license. She began her career at Akron Public Schools in 2002 as a math teacher at Ellett High School. And then from 2003 to 2011, she taught math at Jennings CLC. While there, she successfully increased student engagement in the classroom through discovery learning, content communication, and collaborative projects. She also increased the Ohio Achievement Assessment proficiency among her students. In 2011, she became an assistant principal at Bookdol CLC. While at Bookdol, she was assigned to the middle school side of the building where she gained experience running a middle school building. She remained in the Bookdol position until August of 2018, when she became an academy principal at Ellett High School. She's being recommended tonight for the interim principal position at Jennings CLC. Is everyone able to hear? I think Dr. Akbar.
I can, yes.
I can hear.
Yeah. Dr. Akbar cannot.
We'll give it a second. All right, he left the meeting and we'll wait for him to rejoin.
Kathy, how's your hand while we're waiting? I was curious.
It's good. I've downsized my.
Wow.
Much better, thank you.
Okay, okay. So it looks like now you're down to blue duct tape, and that's about.
It's about the way that it was. Still not 100%, but it's getting there.
All right, I'm back.
All right, good. All right. Okay, our next candidate is Mackenzie Ikenberry. She's new to Akron Public Schools. She graduated from Worthington Kilborn High School and afterwards attended the Ohio State University where she received a Bachelor's degree in human development and family science. And she continued on with her education at OHSU, earning her Master's of Education in early childhood education. She strive for more learning and received her Master's in educational leadership, K-12, from the State University in Florida. She began her teaching career at Broward County Schools in Pompano Beach, Florida in 2013, where she was voted Teacher of the Year in 2016. From 2016 to 2019, she was a team leader. She worked with the Implemented Action Research Program to increase vocabulary retention and improve reading comprehension among third and fourth grade students. She also served as a dual-language teacher for third through fifth grade students, working to develop students into bilingual learners and community members. Tonight, we are recommending her for a Dina Students' Position at the elementary level, and she will be assigned to Richmond CLC. Then we move into the next section, 513. So everyone on this list is a current employee of the district who is being promoted or reappointed. First one is Ms. Lucretia Beecher, who is a graduate of Bookdol High School. She then attended the University of Akron where she earned a Bachelor's degree in integrated social studies. She furthered her education at the University of Akron, obtaining her Master's degree in educational administration, principalship, and obtained a principal license through grades four through 12. She took an additional 18 credits of Master's coursework in the area of instructional technology. Lucretia has taught social studies, government, as well as coached three varsity sports at Bookdol CLC and has coached varsity volleyball at East. She's also a member of the data team, the National Honor Society Selection Committee, and co-senior class advisor with the school. She has received numerous awards, including 2014 Teacher of the Year nominee for Bookdol, 2014 Co-Coach of the Year for volleyball at East, a 2015 accreditation from Amelia Sykes for the Flint, Michigan Water Project, a 2016 Co-Coach of the Year for volleyball, and 2018 Coach of the Year for volleyball. This year, she has been an interim academy principal at Bookdol, and tonight we are recommending her for the academy principal position at Bookdol. Next one up is Carolyn Hurstich. Carolyn is a graduate of Riverside High School in Paneswell, Ohio. She obtained, attended the University of Akron and received her Bachelor of Science degree in special education in 2008. She returned to the University of Akron and completed her Master of Science degree in administration in 2011. And she also completed the district's Inspiring Leaders Program and in 2017, obtained her principal's license. After she completed her student teaching assignments at Leggett and higher, she was hired as a teacher with Akron Public Schools. Her initial assignment was at East High School as a special education teacher. In 2014, she accepted the position of administrative intern at East High School. And in 2016, she became a Dina Student for higher CLC. Over the years, her skills as a teacher were recognized by her administrators. She's been described as an excellent teacher who worked hard to provide a positive learning environment for her students. Her leadership skills were also noted. She was identified as a person who had positive attitude and was enthusiastic and who has a good working relationship with her peers. She was promoted to an assistant principal at Miller South for the Performing Arts for the 2019-20 school year. And tonight, we are recommending her for the principal position at Miller South. Our next candidate is Ms. Tina Lowry. Tina graduated from Brookfield High School in Brookfield, Ohio. She attended Ohio Northern University where she earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in majoring in political science and minoring in Spanish. She attended Kent State University where she earned a Master's in educational leadership. Tina's honors and awards distinctions include graduating with high distinction, three years of the highest GPA for international studies majors. Her professional memberships included the Ohio Council of Social Studies, board member, Northeast Ohio representative, and Teach for America alumni member. Her leadership roles include Building SIP from 2015 to 2019, District Instructional Delivery Subcommittee 2018 and 19, Building Team Leader, and District Social Studies Curriculum Writer. Prior to becoming at Akron Public Schools, Tina advised first-year teachers and wrote summer school curriculum during summer training for the Teach for America Houston Institute. She was also a social studies curriculum specialist for Teach for America Rio Grande Valley for three years. Then she relocated back to Ohio because of her family. She was hired by Akron Public Schools in 2014 as a social studies teacher for Cameron Garfield. She remained in this position until this current school year, when she became an interim academy principal at Firestone CLC. And tonight, we are recommending her for the academy principal position at Firestone CLC.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'm going to ask if the board has no objection that the superintendent revise his recommendations to include all of the personnel recommendations except for item 5.2. Would like to provide some clarification on that item in executive session, and then we'll return and vote on that item after executive session. So unless there is any objection, Superintendent, would you revise your recommendations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Dr. Akbar, a second from Ms. McKittrick. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns otherwise on the personnel recommendations? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
Thank you. We have a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Alexander, a second from Mrs. Mansfield. Any comments, questions, or concerns on the consent agenda items? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall? Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes, I'm staying on 21.5.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category 23.
We have a motion. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. McKittrick, a second from Mr. Alexander on the Business Affairs items. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Just really two items. I know, I want to give a shout out to our staff, our teachers and principals at our high schools. They came up with plans for virtual graduation ceremonies, and those were approved by Summit County Public Health this morning. We got that notification, so we are proceeding with them. And I know as board members, you are asked to do some recordings on speeches for those, so we wish our class of 2020 the best of luck. The other one is based on the guidelines that were released by the Ohio Department of Education as the start of a reset restart plan for Ohio schools in the fall. I have staff working on several flexible options for how we could possibly restart this fall. A lot of that is going to depend on what our health guidelines are. I think even during the finance report, Dr. Hall pointed out, you know, the example of, you know, 20,400 students. If we just said we were going to provide disposable masks, and let's say they were at a minimum two per day, that's, you know, 200,000, 204,000 masks per week. And that doesn't even include hand sanitizer, gloves, et cetera. So there's a lot that we have to do, and a lot of guidance that we're going to need from the Health Department to, you know, try to figure out how we're going to open school in the fall. So we do have teams working on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I am going to keep my report very short tonight. And in fact, several of you have covered some of the things that I wanted to say, as well as thanking LeBron James again and the LeBron James Family Foundation. Received a lot of positive feedback from the video, his message, and the star-studded events, celebrities to our class of 2020. And as Dr. Akbar, I believe, pointed out, lots of great shout-outs for Akron and one of our own students included in the videos. So and really did call public education something that's essential in communities like Akron where he comes from. So just just wanted to say thank you. And as the superintendent just alluded to, graduations are coming up, and we're so grateful to the district and to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and their staff, listening and including students and parents on how we're going to address graduations, and for including us as well as always, and giving us an opportunity to hopefully provide some inspirational words of encouragement or charges to the students that are graduating. And as the superintendent said, our hearts are with you, and we're so proud of everything that you've accomplished and how you've come through this crisis as well. And we'll be there to stand with you socially distanced when you graduate and hope that, and wish you all the success in your future. So with that, Board, too, if you haven't already, I believe I saw everyone's name on the sign-up. But if you haven't, take a minute and sign up to record your graduation message to our students. And also, Mark sent out an update today on technology capabilities for that. So if you want to take advantage, would encourage you to get a copy over to him, as well as bringing a copy on a flash drive with you to your appointment, to your scheduled time. Also, it was mentioned earlier, and I was going to say something, just wanted to say thank you to, again, to our staff for all of the great videos, the videos from the teachers and the principals, the administrators saying how much they miss our students, already the videos that are coming out for schools and programs that would typically do orientation in person, but have moved those orientations virtually. And so our students are already doing those, the sign-ups, I mean, everything. And I don't remember who pointed it out earlier, but, you know, being able to make that 180-degree transition from brick and mortar to a virtual environment. And we had this conversation earlier in one of our committee meetings, that, you know, we were well poised already from the investments that we've made in technology to make this transition. But having this board and this staff and this moment be able to make that transition, and everybody work together seamlessly from the outside, it looks absolutely amazing. So kudos to all of you, and thanks again to our staff for finding creative ways to continue to engage our students. Also, Dr. Akbar and I have asked the administration to work with you all to find a date next week that we can have our first sort of real discussion focused solely on the possibility of a levy and what that would look like. So please keep an eye out via email for those, and we'll try and prompt you when that comes out. Dr. Akbar and I also will put our heads together this week to work to develop an agenda for what I hope is a series of meetings that really starts us at the beginning, sort of starts at a very basic level on what levies and millages are currently in place, what our finances look like, what we might need, and where we might need to go, and find out what questions you have. And hopefully, that culminates in what will be our final decision on what, whether or not we'll do a levy, and when, and what that would look like, and what the milage looks like. And to the people that were giving thanks to Ryan and the superintendent earlier for all of the work that the district's been doing, and all the work Ryan and his staff have been putting into the five-year forecast and our financials. I want to add my thanks and appreciation. This is not easy. These are not easy times, and this is not an easy budget to work with, as all of you know. And with this ever-changing and rapidly changing environment and all of the unknowns out there, it's really difficult. But I also want to emphasize to the public that we will take care of our kids, that we will make sure that they have what they need, and that we have, to this point, been very frugal with the dollars that were given to us in 2012. And I know that I throw it out there a lot, but reminding people that, you know, it's, this is the longest we've gone without having a levy, probably since the 1970s is what we've looked at. We have tried to be good stewards. We have right-sized where appropriate. We have downsized where appropriate. And it's, as Dr. Akbar pointed out, and Dr. Hall pointed out earlier, we were here anyway. This is just speeding things up and making it look a little more serious. So please stay with us and stay tuned in. Feel free to join our committee meetings and watch them live, as well as our board meetings. We encourage you to participate. Reach out to us via phone or email. We're popping into some community meetings, and as you've seen with Ms. Mansfield participating in the Love Akron event, Dr. Ellen McWilliams-Woods participated recently in a Rotary meeting. I'm participating in meetings online, so join us there, too, when you see them, and hopefully, we can hear from you and answer your questions. So that is it for my report. We'll move on, unless anyone has any questions for me, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
I actually had a question for Dr. James regarding graduation, if I could.
Yes, please.
Yes.
So, Dr. James, I don't know if you have the answer yet. So I know we're all recording over this next couple of weeks. Do we have any anticipation of, like, how long the editing process is going to take, and then, like, when the ceremonies will be posted, and what platform? Like, will it be on the school website or the district website for us to view?
Yeah, I think they'll have, they'll have links on the district website, and I think on, we also can link them on YouTube. So Mark Williamson is working through that, and I'll make sure that information gets to the board. And it would definitely will be shared, of course, with the public and our graduates, of course.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions for me or for anyone else? If not, Treasurers' report?
No additional report.
Thank you. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy?
Yes, we have today first, for our first reading of three, a new policy, which is 6107, and it's to authorization to accept and distribute electronic records and to use electronic signatures. Again, this is a new policy. You did receive in your emails information on that and where to direct some of your questions, because this is something that we may need to look at, we are looking at, and we will need to probably have for our future. Thank you.
Dr. Hall, did you have anything to add? Okay, sorry, I thought you raised your hand. All right. Any comments or questions for legal and board policy? Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Finance and capital management?
Yeah, hi, Mr. President. I think you heard our report out earlier. I think Ryan did a fantastic job. Nothing for us to add.
Thank you. Any questions for finance and capital management? All right, instructional policy and student achievement?
Part of our report has to do with some of the things that Dr. James already mentioned. He talked about the teams that were developed or are developing for our reopening and recovery for the fall of 2020. That's a collaborative effort with the administration, Akron Education Association, and it includes parents and students as well. And these teams are going to put a variety of models together and establish a framework for the district as soon as possible. And as soon as the models and the state guidelines are in sync, they will bring those to us. Thank you.
Just a few things to add. Just a note to remind you that you do have a college and career academy update and family engagement update in your board packets. Don't forget to read those. I know we got used to having pictures, and we do miss those from our students and staff, but those are still really good updates. There are two items related to adoption in your board packet. One is for college and career academies, the fire safety program, and the other is for the NIFSTEM mathematics materials. Those will be adopted on the June 8 meeting, but you have two weeks to review them. And there's a video explaining the NIFSTEM materials and fire safety program materials in your board letter, so check that out. Just also want to give a shout out to, I was looking at my calendar, I believe this week would have been our Teacher of the Year banquet. I know last week was, was National Teachers Week, but I believe it would have been this week. Had to take that sadly off my calendar, but doesn't mean that we're not thinking about our teachers every day, and especially at this special time of year. We miss them. We miss that event. And just another quick shout out, I believe Dr. Akbar is going to be part of the Ward Eight, I was reading, part of the Ward Eight virtual meeting. So again, just showing that we're trying to be out in the community, and kudos to him for doing that.
Good. Thank you. Any comments or questions for the Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee? Is there any unfinished business? Or any new business? All right. I do believe, then, that our need for executive session for Ohio Revised Code, Section 121, 122.121.22 G1, to discuss the employment of personnel of the district, is in order, and we are going to need a motion for that.
And President, a 121.22 G3 as well.
I'm sorry I missed that. To consult with legal counsel?
Yes, sir.
Copy that. 121.22 G3 to consult with legal counsel to discuss items that are in dispute or pending or imminent litigation.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Ms. Autry. Are there any final comments, questions, or discussion before we take a vote? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. As usual, we'll exit this meeting. We'll enter the other one. Make sure you're completely signed out of this one, and then we'll come back. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to regular session for the May 18, 2020 board meeting. We have one item for consideration, and that is Section 5.2 from the Personnel Recommendations from the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Dr. Akbar and a second from Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item before we vote? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any other items to come before the board? All right, hearing none. As always, thank you all for your help and your discussion and the great questions. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Have a good evening.
Everybody say, say good night. All right.